Okay, we'll go ahead and convene, I'm not gonna hit the cattle on the workshops.
Thank you.
They jumped you high.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is not work, we gotta...
Oh yeah, turn your microphones on.
There we go. It will be recorded, held against you in the next life, so do what you need to there, everything on, you got that?
First of all, hey, thanks for coming. Thanks for taking your time, come and share with us. Water's an issue whether you have too much of it, not enough of it, or would you just like to shower. I mean, it's just, for some reason, there's just a matter of water's still an issue. Many people have probably gone to the next life because of water. And I hope that doesn't happen in here, so. But appreciate that. Now, we are gonna, actually, it'd be good, Dr. Dawgs, I'm gonna call you Dr. Dawgs 'cause he's earned it. Anyway, he's gonna moderate this, so any yelling and everything goes through him. But we wanna have a, really, an open dialogue as to where we're at and where we're headed. Nathan, I'll turn the time over to you to go ahead and introduce all the whole, all of them, and as you go through and as we get it on record.
Okay, perfect, so introductions, I guess, Will Atkins, he's the regional engineer with State Division of Water Rights, and Teresa Will, the home city, is the state engineer.
Let them introduce themselves, get it on record.
There he is. What an entrance, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hello.
You're in the center, we say you're on the far end.
What?
You're all dressed up, and you're all early, or on time, anyway.
You're supposed to introduce yourself.
Okay, Casey Snyder, I live in paradise, thanks for having me today.
And he's known to pass most of the water bills.
I don't think that was, I don't think that was a compliment.
Chris Wilson, State Senator, District Two.
Dan Johnson, House District Three.
And Representative Mike Peterson from House District Two. Thanks for inviting us.
Go ahead.
Okay, perfect, so yeah, I think we, the council wanted to have this after you guys sent your letter to the state with the proposed new policy, and then Teresa reached out and you guys had some discussion back and forth, and wanna get this meeting organized. So we're gonna have a similar one at our June board meeting with the water.
And that, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I will, was our letter, and we haven't seen your letter, you also sent one where we...
We did not send one, because after talking with Teresa, the deadline for that is gonna be later this summer, and she wanted to come back up and have this meeting and meet with our board, so we didn't wanna draft one before we had that second meeting.
Okay, so we, so we may send two letters, who knows, after this?
You may send a different one after this, and if you guys wanna come to our June board meeting on the...
Because after talking with several of you, we seem like we were all on the same page, where we're headed, so.
What time will that meeting be, Nathan?
It'll be 5:30 in this room, June 12th. I'm pretty sure that's Monday. So yeah, we'll have a similar meeting with our board, to have that same type of discussion, but Teresa put together some numbers, 'cause in their first meeting we had back in, it was early March or late January, you know, a lot of the questions that got asked, we didn't have answers for yet, right? They hadn't put all that together, so she's, she's worked with the local office and put some of the numbers together that we had questions on. So I think first, we'll have her present that, some of the numbers, and give the background of where those came from, that may answer a few of our questions, and then we can open up the discussion from there on. Why this policy is proposing to be changed, and what we see as maybe some things that could be done before that happens. So with that, and such questions from the council, I think I'll turn it over to Teresa to figure out what she has to do.
Can I, and I maybe, in introduction to Teresa, just kinda say a few things, if it'd be...
Oh, no, this is open dialogue, please.
So...
If we get formal, hit us.
Well, I, I don't have a jacket on, so you can tell where I'm at.
The forum.
I didn't shave either. So, so before we kinda get started, I, I wanted to maybe set the discussion, at least from my perspective. You know, we, obviously, I, we have the Water Development Task Force, Nathan's on, and we worked through all of that, and we do run quite a few of the water bills. I've had the pleasure of being in the water space, or the displeasure of being in the water space for a lot of legislative and non-legislative, and I just want you to know how much I appreciate Teresa. So, she has been incredibly responsive, and hopefully you have seen that, even in just coming here, right? This is our state engineer, she has the entire state under her jurisdiction, and within a week of your letter, she was, you know, was here, agreed to have the discussion. I saw the letter, I made a phone call, immediately we had a discussion. So, as we're discussing kinda the future and going forward, she's the second state engineer that I've worked with, no offense to the previous one, but she's the best. And I just want you to know that that's kinda the, it's been my perspective in working with Teresa, very responsive, and I hope that that'll carry through, through all this discussion, like, we're trying to work all this out together, and, and all of you, obviously, are just top-notch and collaborative as well, so just kinda setting the stage as we, as we move forward in the discussion, so, thanks.
Can I sit here, or do you want me?
Uh, go ahead, right there.
Okay.
You can see everybody.
So, I truly do appreciate that you guys reached out with that letter, expressing some concern with the proposal, or what's happening with appropriations. So as, as my role as state engineer, I do have to oversee the appropriation of water within the state, and how we do that is track what applications have come in, what's been approved, what's been perfected, what's being used in each of, and you can imagine, across the state. So it's a pretty big task to have to do. But also, some of the tools that we have, as we start looking at particular valleys, we can set what's called an appropriation policy, which will help define how additional water can be appropriated in a particular area. We also have another tool called a groundwater management plan, and all of these processes are established in policy by the legislature. The meeting that we had in February was a, in response to the governor's proclamation closing the Great Salt Lake areas to new appropriations. And part of that, I was tasked to report to the legislature and the governor in November as to whether the proclamation is effective, should it remain in place, or should it be changed. And so those public meetings, the only way that I can reach out equally to every water right owner in a valley is through a public meeting. And so that's where the February meeting come, came into play. It becomes very tricky that I can't own water rights, I can't hold water rights, and I'm a very unbiased entity that looks at water rights based on the policy and the laws that are established, and hold everyone equally, as far as what that law lays out to managing those water rights. So, we do this through public meetings, there's gonna be another follow-up, we've been meeting across the state, and some of the things I'll talk about today, touch into some of the most difficult decisions and discussions that I have with valleys across the state. There are some valleys within the state that have blown past their safe yield of their aquifer, and those are some of the most difficult discussions that you have, because you have individual homeowners that are gonna get cut off based on priority, so they will have no water to their homes. And that's not an easy discussion to have. In these valleys where that has happened, the conservancy districts are faced with, and the cities, are faced with offsetting, offsetting those cuts in some manner, if they can. And in a couple of the valleys, the conservancy districts are purchasing historic prior rights in order to cover those homes so that they don't get cut off by priority. Priority regulation can be harsh, because it is simply based on first in time, first in right. So, if there's a valley or an area that can make good decisions moving forward in planning, me bringing that information to that body, I'm all for, because I think it will help offset any difficult discussions that you will have when you talk about people fighting, or, I think you referred to it, Chair Erickson, as dying in this room. Some of, there have been deaths based on water rights, so, across the state. Nowadays, hopefully not, but, so let me just present the data that we have in our office, and the state engineer's office is the official office of record for appropriation for the state. It would be our information that you would come to, to see what the valley looks like or what you're looking at. So what we pulled together after that public meeting, and this is the handout that all of you have, so, bottom line, if we look at all filed applications to appropriate, whether they're unapproved, approved, or perfected, you're looking at just over 2 million acre feet of water for this valley, has been appropriated on paper. So if all of those rights are fully developed, that would be a demand on this valley of 2 million acre feet. We can step through the breakdown, there are about 350 unapproved applications that have been filed, and I'm gonna talk just a little bit of a nuance of what some of those applications are, and what those may mean. There are some large appropriations for surface water in this category, and I'm talking 200,000, 300,000 acre feet, filed in the 1960s and 70s. If those were approved today, all rights developed after that priority date would no longer, may no longer have water available, if those prior 1960 rights are developed. We have approved applications, and you can see there, of about 223 acre feet. We have perfected water rights of 1.5 million acre feet, and then we have a list of...
What does that mean?
Sorry, what was that?
Perfected rights, what does that mean?
So what perfected means is that a water right is been, has been placed to use and certified that it's been used, whether it's a pre-statutory right, or whether it's a certificate, somebody filed proof, but it's, at some point, it was put, demonstrated that it was put to use. It doesn't mean that it's in use today.
Okay.
So, but at some point, it was documented that it was. Then you see the remainder of the 19, in 1990, there was a state engineer's appropriation policy that closed the areas and put some significant restrictions based on the supply that may be there. It did indicate in that report, or that policy, that there would still be an allowance of about 25,000 acre feet of groundwater that could be appropriated, and one of the questions that came up is how much of that has been appropriated. There's still, I would say, a significant amount of that, but let me talk about where that 25,000 comes from. That 25,000 is from a planning study as to what may be a recommended amount that could be developed, not based on a hydrologic study. So, I think at the time, in the 90s, there was the statute that was passed on the Bear River development and the investigations that were done there, and I think that was part of the thinking at the time. So, that 25,000, what that report, there was a scientific report done in the early 90s, and it did say that for every amount of groundwater that's developed, it's gonna impact surface water. There's a direct connection. So if you develop a well, you may dry up a spring, or you may dry up a tributary, or you may impact the Bear River. But it definitely shows there's that hydrologic connection. So if you were to develop that 25,000, you are gonna continue to, to make an impact to what has developed, so.
Can I ask a question here? So, on these domestic, small domestic applications, can a domestic application be made without going through a governmental unit?
Might have to explain governmental unit to...
Well, city, county, who, who approves that, or how does that...
So, that's a really good question. So this 500 small domestic applications are the small domestic applications, so somebody wanted to build a home in the county that wasn't associated with a subdivision, so they can just walk into our office, hand us $150, and apply for a new well. So, we've done 500 of those since 1990. And when I talk about those valleys where the most difficult discussions are those small domestic homes, that might be those 500 that are gonna have some difficult, difficult discussions around, because they're the latest in priority. They're the latest to come online. So, there are, yeah, there are other ways that you can, in a lot of valleys across the state, to build new homes. You acquire a piece of an existing water right, it's gonna cost you more money to do that, because you have to buy that water right, and then you file a change application, but it retains that underlying right. So I think there's some companies in the valley, like irrigation companies, and they do this across the state, where an irrigation company will allow a shareholder to drill a well with their share, and then the surface water is reduced by that amount of that share. And it happens across the state in many valleys.
That all depends on the bylaws of that company.
Exactly, yep, yeah.
Teresa, do we have on these 500, how many of those are those type? Like, how many of these are just filing for their, a new water right, and how many are filing a change application on existing rights for a single domestic well?
I don't have that breakdown, but we can get it, for sure. Yeah. So, when we, so when we look at the hydrologic studies, I do believe that we have sufficient scientific information, where some of the things that we may not know is what localized impacts are gonna occur across the county. So let's say you have a significant amount of these small domestics going one corner of the valley, what impact is that gonna have to senior water rights in that area? One of the impacts that we have seen are these shallow historic wells, that maybe were drilled to a shallow depth, and statute and case law say that it's up to that individual, that historic water right owner to go after their water, so they have to drill their own well at their own cost and go deeper. And that's in statute and case law. And that becomes a difficult discussion, right? Because somebody will say, hey, I've been here 60 years, 100 years, my wells existed, how can the, this new small domestic come in next to me and impair me? But you're not guaranteed that artesian head.
With a lot of those shallow well, the shallow wells that you're talking about, a lot of those people that literally dug those...
Yep.
They knew that it, their supply was probably from, it used to be irrigation, flood irrigation systems, that they would come out in that shallow areas, and a lot of them would, they knew that.
Yeah.
And then when, you know, the incentives to pipe and, and put systems in that were a lot more efficient, a lot of those did dry up.
Yeah.
And, so it was their responsibility, because if, if everybody tried to save water, in, in some sense, the state, us, everybody, you know, yeah, those shallow wells just naturally did dry up, because it was surface water that was feeding them.
Or shallow, right? That shallow groundwater. Yeah, and that, the case for that artesian that you have to chase after that water comes from the 1930s, actually, and Murray City versus Wayman, I think is the name of the case. But we've seen it in other parts, you know, Lehigh, north end of Utah Lake, a lot of shallow wells, they used to be artesian flowing that supplied homes, they had to go in, re-drill so that they could get pumps in the casing. And what ended up, those that couldn't afford a water right, 'cause they'd have to buy it, the Lehigh City and Saratoga Springs had to step up and provide them water, figure out how to provide them water. So, it, you know, it's just difficult discussions that happen when you go past that safe yield or start having those localized impacts. So, so part of this, let me also, so, kinda put into perspective, you know, when we look at the total, that 2 million acre feet that's on paper, if you look at, at the bottom of that, we just pulled some mean surface flows from the local tributaries, and it's about 1 million. So now, the mean would reflect any hydrologic connections or shortages, but you can see your double, if, you'd have to have a full double that supply in order to satisfy every single water right, if they were approved and used. Let me just show you a couple other things on these other pages, just gave you a couple hydrographs, and one on the back, through the bear, on the back page. But if you turn to page three, some of the things that we also look at as we're working with valleys, so, the Division of Water Rights, my agency partners with the USGS, and we do what's called a groundwater conditions report. It gives us a data point one time a year in the spring, and so we will track, what are those groundwater trends, what does it look like, what are the impacts of groundwater? You can see that these first two graphs just show, these are estimated discharges or pumping from wells, and so in the valley this last year, you're well over 35,000 acre feet there. So it's a pretty significant amount of groundwater that's being pumped. Then if you look at this trend viewer, which is the bottom half of this sheet, you can actually see this on our website, and it takes those groundwater conditions, and you can highlight an area just to see what groundwater trends are doing. Pretty much, there's not, you know, significant drawdowns. If you look at like the Burl Enterprise area, or Cedar City, you'd see like upwards of 50 to 80 feet of drawdown over the last couple decades. This, you're not seeing as much of the trend, you know, like Mendon there's pretty flat. When you get down there by Hiram, maybe there's a start of a trend that's occurring there. We do have three years of drought that would be the tail end of this, but you might start seeing a trend, you might also see a trend there, just by Smithfield, almost. But those are the types of things that we will look for to see if there's gonna be potential issues with groundwater in those areas.
That, there you've got the Amalgas, that is a well that is measured?
Mm-hmm.
In Amalgas?
Yes, what they do, so...
Their, their well is actually on the east side.
It's about halfway between Amalgas and Smithfield, I think that dog's in there.
Yeah. And what they do, a lot of times, the USGS will estimate pumping based on power records, there may not actually be a measurement or a sensor in the well.
I've just also noticed that, you know, you can see, there was a great big well that was dug there in Nibley, that here, recently, and all, you know, and I'm wondering what kind of effect you can see, all of a sudden, kind of a sharp decline when that came into effect.
Yeah, so one of the things that can happen, if we have sufficient funding, so with this USGS partnership, we have in other areas, we've asked for additional monitoring wells to be installed, or measurements to be installed, where we think there might be an issue. So we look for someone who has a well, and then they go out and measure that each spring, so that we could see, so that Nibley well could be one that could be added to this inventory, it just costs dollars to do that, and maintain.
I have a question about that, because I used to work for Nibley, and I, I was involved with that most recent well drilling project, and we drilled it down to, I think, about 640 feet deep, and what we were told by the engineer who was assisting us was that it was not connected to the surface water aquifer, and we even did sampling, sampled the chemistry, the temperature of the water, and, and when we did, when we did our drawdown test before the well became operational, we pumped a lot of water out of it, over 24 hours, and had, it rebounded almost immediately. So, I'm curious about the depth of all of these wells, and if they are in different aquifers, because clearly a shallow well that is, as Chairman Erickson just mentioned, a shallow well that's influenced by flood irrigation, there's clearly a connection, we can almost see it with our eyes, but some of these other ones, I, I've been under the impression over the years that they're actually disconnected from our surface water aquifers, or surface water systems. Is that correct, or is that possible?
It's probably not an immediate connection, but I don't know that there's been identified any sort of separate aquifer for this area. We do have that 94 study, which included a model. We can't necessarily use that model to do predictions, or estimates, or planning type things, but we could take a look, a closer look at that well, 'cause what may be happening is just an anomaly of whatever is below the surface, and so we could look at those cuttings, do an estimate, and maybe you're just in a little bit more of a tighter sediment, or maybe some sort of clay layer there. But we can definitely take a closer look at why that isn't having an immediate effect.
Yeah, 'cause I, 'cause I've been under the impression for several years now, since I was told that, that, that they weren't influencing each other, that that water was from millions of years ago, that it was deposited there, and that, in fact, pumping that water up and adding it to surface water was helping our situation, but I'd be curious to know more about that, if that's actually true.
Yeah, and we can definitely take a look at that. We do have, across the state, especially in the southern part of the state, we actually have a couple of applications to appropriate for significant groundwater in deeper aquifers. So far, there hasn't been direct evidence that it's not connected. And so, and sometimes what we'll see in a couple other areas, you'll have maybe a perched aquifer, where once that draw, draws down, so it's overflowing into the main aquifer, once that drawdown happens in that perched aquifer, it stops drying, and you'll see like vegetation change, kind of around where that was contributing to the main aquifer. But you're still connected in there, you're just maybe up in a perched area, that might be what's happening. And we do manage, in other areas, those as one basin, 'cause they are connected. It's just, you've drawn down so much that you're not now contributing to the main aquifer. So...
Would you like me to answer for something?
Sure, did you have more?
So, so the groundwater aquifer in Nibley especially, I mean, what a transmissive aquifer that is, and you may not see a large decline, but some of the previous studies that were done, I know that the York and Greavy Study in the 1970s, pumped, pumped the Weather Shield well, or what's known as the Weather Shield well, and, and they were, they actually noticed a, a response over a mile away, mile and a half away, in eight minutes, they were able to see that, it was a highly transmissive aquifer. And so, even though it may be old water, it has to be replaced.
Yeah.
And so, there is a connection to the surface water, and yeah, hopefully it's not taking surface, surface water, because then you'd be worried about contamination.
Yeah.
But, but that water does need to be replaced, and so the general outcome of the model that was done is that the surface and groundwater are connected, even though it doesn't address timing necessarily.
So does this, these graphs here, does this indicate that we're overdrafting?
No, those levels look pretty, pretty, pretty even. If, if you, if you were exceeding safe yield, you'd see very drastic. That bottom one is the only one that may be having a downward trend.
Okay, and then, another question I had, on the front page where you showed the main surface sources, this bottom list that you have, where they all add up to 1 million, and then you compare that to the 2 million on your table on the top, are we double counting a lot of this water in the table on top with the 2 million? For example, like Chairman Erickson said, somebody flood irrigates a field, and then downhill from that, somebody has a shallow well, they're pumping that same water that was just flooded onto the field, out into their shallow well now, so isn't that double counting? And then, once that person pulls it out of the shallow well, and they, there's some law... And then once that person pulls it out of the shallow well, and they, there, there's some loss along the way, but there's push water, there's, there's extra water that doesn't get used that, that flows downstream and gets used again. Is, is that what we're seeing in this two million acres, some double counting or triple or quadruple?
So that two million is the face value of the water right? That they, anybody who has a water right could pump up to that amount and actually divert two million.
I have, I have one question on that too. So most of these surface rights are, of course, majority of irrigation rights. And so that volume would be based on their, their max, their, their right. Like in our, my company, thirty-four CFS through the whole season.
Well, for, yeah, through the-
Yeah, through the irrigation. Even though most years it's, you know, we can never get that because it's not there. So this would be if, if we had perfect flow in every river through the irrigation.
Then you could do the two million.
So it probably is, it probably is quite a bit less than that if we look at their, what their actual usage is.
Yeah, so what I was going to answer to, to your question there is the two million is what is allowed to be, to be used under existing water rights of record. Most likely, there's hydrologic cuts, so priority is coming into play, and we're cutting based on priority date. If you only have a million, then we're likely cutting that two million down to one, or we would have to cut it down to one. So we'd have to do about a million of hydrologic cuts or cuts made. So your, your question of if they divert into that canal and you had a well over here, well, if they were fully consuming that water right, they lined the canal, and they were diverting and using up to their full amount, there may not be any water that overflows to that well over here, that shallow well. It may be gone, and there's no recourse for that shallow well owner. So there could be an impact there.
Have there been recently, uh, wells drilled for communities for water supplies? And are there some applications, uh, in the works for that to, moving forward?
Yeah, it's continually-
What's that look like?
So I don't have a specific number. Did you isolate any of the public supply wells from these numbers? We could do that and look at what those look like.
Be interesting to see what, you know, with the growth and all that, what those needs might look like.
Yeah, some of the hard, um, some of the other challenges, some of the other valleys face, um, believe it or not, Cedar City has the most junior water rights in that valley for a city that has been around for a long time. Um, they're actually faced with the biggest cuts in the groundwater management plan that we have to implement because they're exceeding safe yield in that basin. So, um, not all public suppliers have the senior rights.
And, uh, Melissa, I had one comment today's, uh, Dave, Dave Zick's question about those wells. So we're actually working with, hopefully, the new county wide planner. We're going to have a meeting next month with, with Bob Hope. So he, he has probably mapped the valley wells and drawn, hand drawn maps of every quad in a county. He's getting a little bit older in his years. And so we're going to try to contract with him to get all that digitized. And so you'll have a better idea of what that valley floor looks like on all those layers, because he's, he's mapped every well log and he draws the different colors. I don't know if you've seen his maps really.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it, it's pretty impeccable what he's done. And so you can see, as you put those together, if we can get the, the GIS department to hook all that together, you'll be able to have a three D model really of what our groundwater system looks like.
That answers my question.
And I think for that, for us, even in something like this, it's going to be a valuable tool to see how that is connected, because that, that is old water in some of those pockets. But where is it connected? You know, it's, it's hard to see if you don't have that map.
Yeah, I just feel like, for example, if you looked at starting in the south end of the valley, out by Mount Crest, when, when farmers start to flood those fields, that water ends up springing out along the Blacksmith Fork River. And then, and then it's diverted or pumped from that area, and then is irrigated again on fields in and around Nibley College Ward area, and then flows off of that into places farther down. If we put, I don't know, radioactive isotopes in it and tracked it all the way through, we'd see multiple people using the same water over and over again before it even leaves our valley. It's used multiple times. Uh, so that, that's my point, is that the people in Hiram have a water right, and they're putting that water on, and then the people in Nibley have a water right, and they're putting that water on, and then the people downstream from Nibley have a water right. But it's actually the same water, maybe being used three, four times where it leaves our valley.
Yeah, no, and that's, um, very true, that, um, somebody else's diversion is somebody else's water right across the state. You know, you look at the severe river system, and they're probably, well, they claim to be ninety to ninety-five percent efficient, but I bet that one molecule of water is used eleven to twenty times down that river. But where the impacts start happening is if you up in the upper reaches start doing major development around those areas, you're not going to have that, that molecule's going to get consumed up higher, and it's not going to make it down. So you could have that change occur, um, by development or whatever, additional diversion. So change of irrigation practices even will affect that.
So, but my overall question with that is, are we actually over allocated if we're using the same water multiple times over?
So I think where, what you're facing is that you may not be exceeding safe yield yet. Um, so now's the time that I think as a county, you can do some things to, to not get to that point, to where you're not having those conversations. And continuing to appropriate on top of that two million, I'm not sure if that's what you want to do. Maybe it's what you want to do, but if you want to at least know what is your endpoint, okay, let's say we, you want to stay at that two million, well, then how do you look at rights that are already there to do what you need to do? So I think you're at a, kind of a crossroads right now. What do you want to do? I don't know if you want to keep adding to that and building it up. So, and if that's the case, then, you know, the, having the area close to new appropriations, unless there's mitigation or you use an existing right and file a change, um, keeps you, at least you know where your endpoint is, right? So, um, and a lot of valleys, honestly, across the state are closed. There's very few areas within the state of Utah that are open to new appropriations. Um, some of the things that also could change this supply is Wyoming and Idaho. We have two states that we have really no jurisdiction to do anything that, um, still has compact allocation that they can develop. And that could change what comes through the bear. The other thing that, um, so part of one of the changes that the legislature did this last year was they did, um, make it so that the state engineers, so now I sit on that Bear River Commission. Um, so I'll be part of those discussions with the other two states. And I do feel that it shouldn't just be Utah that's taking the brunt of whatever hydrologic shortages. But I think you also, um, need to keep in mind too that you've got senior rights down at the bottom of the Bear River that two years ago, if there was a priority call across that Bear River, Bear River system, it would come up into the tributaries, and Cache Valley is one of those tributaries.
We were really close to that, like-
We were stuffing envelopes.
It's not a hypothetical, that almost.
Yeah, so two years ago, I think Will had a difficult conversation with a Hiram operator, maybe? Porcupine, Porcupine in Hiram, because they are junior rights too at the bottom of the river system. Um, the, one of the actions that I have taken this year is that, um, for example, the Bear River Refuge, I've said that I'm not shutting off any right up in a tributary in Utah unless you show me with a measurement that you're not getting your water. So we are working with them to get measurements, but I need a measurement to show. It's not just, we think we're not getting our water. And that goes to anybody. If you think you're not getting your water, well, before I cut somebody else off, I need to have you measure it to show. So there are some things that have come into play over the last two or three years that could have affected some of these existing rights even more than they have, so.
So how did you resolve that?
Um, for the Bear River Refuge, um, basically sent them a letter saying you need to install a measuring device. And so, and by statute, I do have authority to do that, to issue an order. Um, we are helping them get that, um, measurement device. We have staff that do installation, and so we're going to do that. We're actually also going to collect it, um, through automation so that it will be clear what those diversions, so anybody can see it.
Can I ask you a question? I'm just trying to understand maybe how this, this policy might play out in future years. So let's say there are no more small domestic applications approved ever again.
Or applied.
Or applied for, yeah. So no more of those happen. So that means now that if somebody wants one of those, they have to go find an existing right, do a change application, uh, which then causes, uh, causes some scarcity in, in the market, and water rights get more expensive, get more rare, because they'll, they're not being created. They're, what's there is there. Uh, that, that makes it then, I think, less likely that people are going to develop in the unincorporated areas, that if people want to build a house, they'll have to build it in a city where the city hopefully already has some water rights. Um, and then eventually, those cities are going to use up all their water rights, and their only time they're going to be able to provide more culinary supply is if they get existing water rights and, and do a change application. Uh, am I, am I correct in, in visualizing how this might play out?
Yeah, um, I think one thing to add to that is that, um, if somebody wants to develop and wants to build a house, they'll find a way. And so that hasn't stopped development and growth in other areas where they have to buy an existing water right to do that. So I think eventually, at first, it's going to be like, okay, wait a minute, I have to go buy it, because you haven't had to do that here, right? I need to go buy a water right, well, that's going to cost me a thousand dollars, not a hundred and fifty, to just come down and, and put that down. Um, but you may pay that thousand, and you have a senior priority, so you're not going to get cut off if there is a shortage.
But that, that actually is the way it works now in all the cities. Or at least most of them. I think most of the cities have a policy like that. If, if you're going to develop, if you're going to do a subdivision, you have to come to the city and give the city water rights. Is that in effect what would be happening in the unincorporated area? Is the same thing that's been happening in the cities?
I think already on, on a lot of these five hundred applications that is. So, so when I, my last house I built, it was on a lot that had already been split since ninety-nine. So, so I couldn't go in for the hundred and fifty dollars. I had to find another water right and bring to that well. There's already a well there, but I had to bring another water right to that well. So, so a lot of the county ones are already doing that. And so I don't, I mean, there, there is going to be the other scenario, whether, whether it's a parcel that hasn't been divided since ninety-nine under the old, before the governor's proclamation, they can get that water right and drill that. And I think at least from the water district's side, the, the fact that they might have to go buy a water right and transfer isn't, isn't our biggest worry about this policy. It's that we think we need to get a better understanding of what that safe yield really is, uh, and, and that interconnection between surface and groundwater, because if we keep going the way we are, either way, we're going to run out of groundwater. The cities get all of the irrigation shares as it develops, and they do a change application to groundwater and pump groundwater. At some point, we either got to put in a water treatment facility because we're going to overdraw that. And so we would like to more see that study done first, so we know where that safe yield is. You know, and on here, it's, it says, you know, our, our estimated recharge is two hundred and fourteen thousand, and we're withdrawing thirty thousand. So we're throwing fifteen percent of what's recharged into there. Most of the rest of that, you know, leaks out of some of our big major springs that, that run, you know, thirty or forty CFS year round, different things. And so it's coming out. We don't want those springs to stop flowing either. And so I, you know, at least from our point, it's, we need to build that connection a little better, which I think takes a little more studying. That, the, the well mapping is the first phase of, I think, a lot of it. It's not going to give us the answer, because there, there are, there are a lot of water rights in the county. And then to your point, you know, how much of that, you know, two million acre feet is kind of double counted? It's not really, because they are real water rights, but we can't get all those water rights if they're not there because the rivers don't, you know. If we had a whole bunch of reservoirs and we stored it all, then, then we would know what was there, but we don't. So we use what, what flow is there. And so getting a bu, better understanding of all of that, before we just say, let's close it for good, I think is, is our stance next, is to look at that relationship.
And if I could maybe jump in here too.
No, I, I actually, you know, we're down to just about thirteen minutes, but, uh, I would like to hear legislators, kind of their viewpoints of this whole process. Uh, you know, we, we basically signed what we signed, that, uh, which kind of goes in line with yours, is to, we're really requesting, we want, we want some, the deep study again, you know? We want to really, you know, the, the impact study. Go ahead then, Casey.
Yeah, and I think that's actually the, the fundamentals to why I think this is a good policy, right? This isn't a permanent closure where the governor's at. It, it was to do the very thing that you're talking about, right? Like, here's a pause, we need to take a deep dive into this ba, better data set. I mean, those were the conversations Theresa and I were having before the executive order was even issued, was we don't have a full understanding of the interconnectedness between groundwater and surface water basin wide as you're looking at the Great Salt Lake. We are, we are at the most significant drought in, on record. Like, are we cutting our nose to spite our face going forward because we don't have good information? So that's kind of how I saw it. I don't know if Theresa can-
Yeah, can, can I address the, the concerns?
Yeah, and then again, we'd like to hear from all of them.
Okay, so just really quickly, then the USGS study does give us some significant scientific information that groundwater and surface are interconnected. Now, how that plays out within the basin, the specific impacts that that would have, um, there's ways that you can study that, but it's going to cost some significant money. And I'm not sure that it will inform any better. Um, in some areas it will, and by doing some strategic monitoring wells or measuring, you know, where the, kind of a, where it may go to the surface source, um, you could do that type of thing. But I think, um, just like Casey said, do we put a pause? Because appropriation policies can be changed. Um, just like if they get changed now to just close to new appropriations, can come back and say, yeah, there's plenty of supply. It's shown that there's no impacts, so let's open it up. So it's not a permanent thing.
But in, in the meantime, though, you've picked winners and losers.
Um-
Losers meaning, a lot of these single, these people out there that are just wanting one home are going to be outbid quite often.
Could, could.
Cities will have a huge impact on being able to, you know, almost purchase what they want or develop or, or enact, you know, policy that basically says, hey, any, any of your irrigation rights on this land has to come to us. And those things, I guess what I'm saying is, you're almost, the little guy, he might not have a chance at all to even ever build a home. Because he could be outbid during this process for any water or any opportunity or any water right or somewhere that he could go to get that. And I, that's what I worry about.
Yeah, it's going to cost more money.
I don't think they're the, I don't think they're the biggest contributors. I think that the biggest contributors are the bigger volume wells that have been going in. And so I, I, that's why I, I'm hesitant to, my personal feeling is I hate to just cut them off, little single family, you know, users or potential users, so, but that's just a viewpoint. So anyone else like to speak of anything there?
I was just, I was just thinking about this. I did a little, little bit of research, but I just wonder how some of the appropriations that the legislature has made for research and for grants and applications that like farmers and ranchers and others can make for agricultural optimization, water that gets saved, and then, you know, for agricultural purposes, about, I think, what, eighty percent of the water used is in agriculture? And if that optimization actually works, then what, what, what would happen for the availability of water? So I really like what Casey just said, that things put on pause for a while until you start taking a look at all these different appropriations, impacts that they might have on, on the use of water. I don't, I don't know how that plays into all this, but it, it could be a big deal. So I, I was just looking at all these numbers that were appropriated. So there was, uh, uh, twenty-two and a half million, million ongoing, and four hundred and seventy-five million one-time money just to get a lot of this research and, and different things, uh, started. So I, I would just say to you that there was a lot of work around water, uh, that was done in the last session, and actually putting money behind the words to actually- in the last session and actually putting money behind the words to actually do the research, I think, that Chair, that you're, you're asking about.
I had a question on that, just really quick. As far as I understand it, as a county, we can't do any of, do anything with that money. It has to be some other water right holder and another entity that would sponsor a project or pull from that, in the sense, we don't own the water right, we can't study, we can't require the measuring device to go in, et cetera. I, I need more clarification on how we can encourage people to use it, but I don't think we're the lever, I don't think we have any levers to pull on that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ethan, but.
So I, I would say with that, with a lot of that, especially the biggest chunks, the ag optimization.
An ag user would have to pull that lever.
Yeah, an ag user. But, but the big thing with that is, and then we're, we're doing some studies on some of the canals that, that come out of the Blacksmith Ford, because sometimes piping every canal may not be the answer in some cases, cuz like Dave said, the most canals leak one to the next, one to the next. And so some of them are gonna take bigger studies to see, you know. How do you really optimize that? Right? If we don't reduce, you know, and the state engineer's gonna look at this, if we don't reduce depletion, there's really no new water. Because if someone else's right, then you didn't divert. And so, so that, I think that it's gonna really slow down the implementation of using that two hundred million dollars, because it's gonna take a lot deeper dive into how we implement those projects to come up with, with new water essentially to use for a different use. But yeah, right now, the county, county couldn't apply.
So yeah, who, who would it, who would it be that's gotta go and put that study project together?
It, it depends. In this case out there, it's gonna be the water district and the canal companies. We're working with those companies, we're trying to get another PL five sixty-six to study that watershed and see how everything's interconnected before the canal companies say, we're just gonna pipe everything. Because it may be piping part of it and, and leaving some in the river or some in a stretch that we know this is a good recharge area. It's, you know, the next given. Why, we think, and that, and I'm glad to hear that they say this could be a temporary policy, cuz we think there's a lot of studying that needs to be done on the water in the valley to solve our problems fifty and a hundred years from now. It's not just, just this, there's, there's no one answer. It's not gonna be easy.
It takes some time.
Can I add just one?
Yeah, yeah.
To his question. So some of the appropriation that was done by the legislature last year did give my agencies some money for measuring devices and telemetry, so we can do that and I can order a, a measuring di- device be installed. There's also was a small amount of money that they appropriated, and thank you very much, for additional groundwater studies, so that we can, if there's a need, then we can go into an area, whether we add a monitor well or, like I talked about in the beginning. I don't know that it's, that a, another full basin study like a, a model would inform any more than what we have with that ninety study, but there may be certain areas where we could focus to try and look at, are there impacts that are going on? So we do have some appropriation.
And Mark, we're jumping in on that. So I ran the appropriation that she's talking about with the telemetry. And it was actually, the idea originated after a water district meeting, board meeting, and is based on data collected by Utah State, right? So while you may not have direct access and the means to require someone to do X, Y, or Z, there's a pretty open dialogue between us and the rest of the folks here at this table. So I think if, i- as we move forward with this, if there's a coordinated effort between the county council, us, as, as your representatives, the district and the state engineer's office, we, we can answer some of these questions and are willing to chase state dollars and state means to make that happen as well, so.
We're here from the government, we're.
Oh, I'm not. No, that's. I said I'm giving money, which is not.
And we're here to help.
Just twisting cases where it's.
We've, we've all heard that statement.
I think my point is clear, we can't. If I could just, just really.
Please, go ahead, yeah.
If there's one thing that, you know, I, I learned on my trip, we went to Israel for a, for a week to watch how Israel manages their money, or their money. Their water, which is their money.
Watch the money.
I, I, I had to realize very quickly that we here in Utah are, a lot of this is going blind, but we need more data. And I think the appropriations from the state, I think we're all serious about it, and so I think the bottom line is, is we need to allocate more money towards some of the, getting data. And you see with these aquifers and some of these things, I mean, Israel's amazing. They know what every aquifer, how, how much, how much water's there, where it's going. It's amazing, that way you can manage it. And, you know, until we get that data, obviously, the idea of cutting off water permanently is, is a problem, but I'm gonna do everything I can, I'm sure Casey will. Theresa was awesome on that trip. But we, we are way behind on data to be able to manage our, our, probably our most precious resource.
Well, I, I wanted to ask, what's the timeline for, for getting some of this data? I mean, are we ten years out or is it?
No, no. We're actively really accelerating the efforts to get measurement. Part of also what we're doing is some transparent models, so that you can see, someone would be able to go on to our website and see exactly where water's going and how much is being diverted. One of the hard parts, when you say the government, we're here to help, you know, we, we get an, we get an inquiry that somebody will say, I'm not getting my water, they're stealing it up above, and like, okay, well, let's measure what you're getting. Well, you're taking more than your water right. And so that's usually the first thing we find out. But you gotta do, you know.
One of the, one of the, I guess the maddest calls I ever got was from a lady, and actually and her husband, that they were so mad that they used to raise a really nice garden until the irrigation company fixed their pipe.
Yes.
So how, so how long are we talking? Before, before we might have some answers and know if this is a pause, if this is a permanent, or if there's gonna be some loosening?
Oh, good.
Yeah, just do you want me to address that real quick?
Uh, hang on, Nolan want, has a question?
Yes. He's online.
Nolan Gunn, one of the council, where's he at?
He's on there.
Speak, Nolan, speak. Yes.
Mine was a good question.
Yes, we can.
We're nodding our heads.
My question was, if there's five hundred individual wells done since nineteen nineties, they have later priority rights, what about the communities, municipalities who have drilled wells, and where do we go on that? And second, if we're buying previous water rights, there needs to be a better way of finding and knowing that you're buying a good water right? I don't know how we do that, but I asked a lawyer to help me, and believe me, he's telling me there's concerns out there about your buying, so we need some direction or help if that's what we're gonna be relying on.
Could you go ahead and address those two questions real quick?
Yep, so.
Any of you, please.
Um, the first one, remind me what the first one was. I remember the second one, how do you know you're getting good water? Oh, the five hundred. So if those are the later priority, we can see how those compare to some cities, they're probably later in priority as well, and we'll do a little bit more sifting of the data and can bring that back to you so that you know what that looks like. As far as buying a good water right, the gray hair I have comes from sometimes the bad water rights that are being marketed that we see out there. But by statute, I am required, we are required to do pre-consultation meetings with individuals, and so you're more than welcome to come to us. We'll meet, we'll talk to you about, hey, here's some of the concerns, we think if you're gonna do this, you probably need to talk to these other peoples because we, we can see some impacts that may happen. And we do that across the state and happy to do that. But there are some not-so-good water rights out there that you just have to be careful of. And maybe to the representative's question about when are we gonna see the data? So as far as any additional modeling here, that's probably not gonna happen right away, but as far as measurement, we're actively doing that now to get better data, so.
Comments, questions from any of the council members?
You know what? I had a, I had a question, and it probably doesn't matter if no one else thought of it, but the, on the perfected rights where you said they were historically granted but maybe are not being used, is there some way to measure that or to say, well, maybe that one point five million acre feet isn't really, maybe there's some leeway there to be used or had?
Right.
And I didn't know if that was in the works.
Real quick?
Yeah.
So by statute, there, if the water right's not used for a period of seven years, then it can be subject to forfeiture. I don't forfeit water rights, that's the courts that do that. But the biggest way for us to identify that is measurement and metering.
Okay.
Know what's being used, so.
Thank you.
And your moratorium officially starts when?
Moratorium? What moratorium?
Well, excuse me, you're ceasing of all, of, of new appropriations.
So if there's gonna be any policy change, it will be done through public meeting and public comment. So we'll have another meeting probably August after we get some feedback with some local folks, because I have to make sure I'm talking to all water users.
So is this gonna cause a run on everyone running into your office and getting?
Because it's already full because of the governor's proclamation. So they can't do it now.
Well, they could do, they can do the.
Single-family domestic.
In the county, those small ones.
Right, you can still do the single-family dwelling, the domestic use, you can still do that, but you can't do the larger appropriations, right?
Yeah.
Right, we haven't approved a large appropriation.
For a while.
There are a couple that's going in, in though, or being dug, pretty good.
Change applications. Yeah, like just change.
Okay.
So maybe just one thing that I've seen as a solution in other valleys, that just something to think about, you know, with a conservancy district, there, there could be a possibility that they could purchase an existing water right and then do, allow homes to be built off of that water right, so they could do something there. Some other conservancy districts have done that, like down in Washington and Iron Counties. So, and now might be a cheaper time to buy.
And I wanna protect the little guy.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's.
It's heartbreaking.
And, and to go to battle against the bigger cities that have bigger poles, bigger whatever, you know, that responsibility in the unincorporated area, we gotta somehow protect them somewhat.
Well, don't, don't forget, though, in the whole bait too, and I, I, sympathetic, being sympathetic to that, some of those little guys have senior water rights, right?
Some.
For, for, like, think of ag, right?
Yeah.
And if enough little guys put enough straws, then there's a, while our courts and case law don't withhold that, in theory, there is a take, right? Because if I push the water down for a guy that's been there a hundred years, he has no recourse. He, the only thing that person can do is put in a, a well at a hundred dollars a foot right now, right?
Yeah.
And so there's, that's the, the dance she has to do that is hard.
Yes, it is. I couldn't afford to drill a new well if I had to.
Hey, we appreciate this dialogue.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Thanks for taking your time.
Yeah.
It's been good. And our legislators, we appreciate your time. And stick up for us at times. You do that, and we appreciate, you do that, and we do appreciate it. And I understand working together on this will be. It's, it's always the best thing. We may have been a little bit knee-jerk, but hey, you know, we, I think it was a, a, a good letter that you know how we feel, and I know how, we understand your positions and that, but let's just keep talking.
And not like that.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Phone number. We get your phone number, where you're local?
Yeah.
Eight seven five five?
You've never been in there?
I have, just don't have a phone.
Okay, I was gonna say, that's a, see ya, doctor.
I know it's hard for you, cuz you probably, you know so much. Did you have any questions or comments that you would have?
Yes, old Bob Fatherman, Bob Fatherman's your boss, right? Years ago, it's amazing how time flies.
I saw Bob.
I feel like I'm drinking out of a water, a, a fire hydrant.
Help to start the water district.
Yeah, I know, I, I worked with him. We're, I talked to him when he was here. Progress or lack thereof.
We were only twenty years late on the water district, I hate to say. Okay.
East Mill on the water thing, gee, it's great.
Mr. Hilliard, matter of fact, would that be okay if he gets comfortable and, that'd be great, from right, from right there, just make sure that little green light's on right there?
It's on.
Okay, and in twenty-four minutes, you're gonna teach us everything we know about government.
Okay.
Legislative, executive.
I'm gonna correct you, first of all, you called me Mr. Hilliard, that's my dad. Call me Lyle. Glad, glad to be here, and I'll tell you what prompted this. When you were having trouble last fall, I was following the newspaper and I learned one thing, and that, that when I read something in the paper, I don't particularly believe it, but there's something happening. And it reminded me of all the trouble we had gone through in the legislature about trying to understand the role of the governor, the legislature, even the courts. And I'll, I'll give you a good example, I made some notes here, so I won't forget them. What role does the attorney general play in the state of Utah? Now, the attorney general will tell you, I go out and I run for election, and I have my, you know, that I campaign on, and that's what I wanna do. And so the legislature funds her office or his office, and we can control somewhat what they do. But it just, it would drive, and, and what makes it difficult is when you've got different political parties. When you've got the governor's a Democrat, the legislature's Republican, even the attorney general's a Republican. How do you blend all of that in and tie that? So as I was reading what you were saying, I think one thing the council really needs to do is, is go to your foundational documents, and I have not done that. So what I'm talking about on the state level may not apply to you, you may have statutes that cover it differently, you may wanna cover that. But I think, the, the key thing you need to do is have an attorney who can advise you on what your position is here and what you should do, help you draft ordinances or that, so you have them legally correct. Now, I assume what happens is the county attorney's office does that. And that's fine, except when you get a conflict, when you get a conflict, either internally within the council or with the executive and, and the council, who represents who? Now, I'm sure if I asked Jake who he represents, he, he, he hasn't been through the election process yet, but when he does, he'll tell you, I went out and I campaigned on certain things that I wanna do as a county attorney. And he has his own really political agenda that he ran for, and people voted for him. Now, it's gonna be pretty hard if he does that on, on, say, a law and order, if the county council says, we're gonna cut your prosecutors, we think you've got too many prosecutors, we're gonna give you just one prosecutor. And if the executive says, well, I think you ought to be emphasizing more on environmental issues. And he says, now, wait a minute, I only have so much staff that I do and control it. But I think the best way to do is that Jake ought to pick someone in his office to be.
Dane.
Dane, excuse me. Dane. That's the best compliment you've had.
He, he has been called worse, right?
And you will be called worse. I think Dane ought to pick someone in his office who has just the side role of being your legal advisor. And now, that can be the same way as the, but, of the executive, except you gotta be very careful, attorneys hate conflicts of interest. I always hated that, when somebody came and talked to me about a legal matter, and then somebody else came and talked to me and wanted me to sue the first person I talked to, I can't do it, I've got a conflict of interest, cuz I know things, I gather meetings. And that becomes really a difficult thing in a county attorney general's office, a county attorney's office, how you handle it. We call it the Chinese wall. You build up a wall between them, so they don't talk where it's conflicting area. And maybe if it gets severe enough, and that's why I asked that question the other day, the county attorney may wanna go to Box Elder County and bring one of their attorneys over who specializes that, who can advise you in that. Cuz I, I felt watching this last fall, that probably you would all have been better off if there were different attorneys, not that they were adversaries, but they were advising each party what to do. I know, it's, the easiest thing for me as an attorney is to tell you, you can't do it. The hardest thing is to figure out some way to do what you wanna do, and that's, you need that kind of creativity. So I think the first thing you really need to look at is, is to find some way that you as a council have an attorney you can go to, that you know that their primary responsibility is to represent you, not the, not the county executive, not even the county attorney's office, but to represent you, and, and then maybe you can negotiate what the problems are, but you're talking legally at what you're doing and doing it that way. Now, the next thing I wanna talk to is a little bit about budget. In the Utah constitution, it's very clear, the legislature sets the budget. And one of the most difficult things when I first got in the legislature is that the governor would make a recommendation, and we wouldn't know until the second day of the session what his recommendation was. So we had staff, and we were lucky, cuz we in the legislature had. So we had staff, and we were lucky, because we in the legislature had a staff, he had a staff, and they'd work, and bingo, we'd hear the figures the second day of the session. And our fiscal analyst people would come and say, that is way off. He's got figures way out there that we'll never get in this. And then we, we battled the first three weeks of the session as to whose revenue figures we're gonna use. So we came up with an idea, and it worked out really well, we have consensus figures. What happens in the legislature is the legislature has a professional staff, they hire outside independent people who advise them. The governor has his staff, he has outside people advise him. And they meet together usually about the end of September. We have to have our budget submitted by January when we meet in there. And we have a fiscal year that goes July through June. So we're six months out when we do our budget. And what happens is these groups, these two groups meet together, and they agree on the basic figures. What are you using for unemployment? What are you using for new car sales? What are you using for new homes and this? And, and then they come to consensus figures on that, and then they go back, and they come back about two weeks later, about the first part of November, and then they have, then they work out what they agree to be revenue consensus figures. Now, one particular session, we were not gonna get the consensus figures. Because I, as appropriations chairman, never went to that meeting, nor did the governor or his staff personally. We, we told staff, this is not political, this is economically. You come up with the figures that you can live with, and then, then we'll work with them. And one year, that word I was getting is the governor was putting too much pressure on the staff to have higher revenue projections, so he could spend more money in the things that he, he had made promises on. And so we had to, our staff held fast, and right at the very last, the governors caved in, and we had a, a revenue estimates that were together. So we were seeing off the same sheet during the whole time. Now, I understand you have a, a staff person who helps you, and that may be well to do that. And I don't know how much you actually put the budget together. The other thing I've found when I do budgets, the more precise I could be in the funding, the more exact I was, something was gonna happen. I hated to just give the Cache County Sheriff's Office X number of dollars without saying so much for the jail, or so much for this or that. And, and you're meeting often enough that if you find an overrun or some short, you, you meet at, at least twice a month, and you can put on your agenda and come in and make an adjustment on that. We had to be called back in the special session by the governor to make any changes like that. And the rule was, the governor could do across-the-board cuts if he felt the revenue was down, but he could not cut public education, which is fifty percent of the budget. But he'd just do an across, he'd say a two percent cut about everything else. Well, bringing the legislature in, we can then allocate where the, the cuts ought to be based on where the needs really are at the time. So I think that's really quite important, that you do your, your budget. Now, I sense that one of the issues I heard is, is you didn't get budgets until the last minute, and, and I think there ought to be some, you know, I looked at it as a legislator, having done the budgets, we had our budget. And, and if the governor didn't give a budget, we could've gone ahead anyway, because, because we gave the input, and we made the decisions on the budgets. It was only the recommendation of the governor to us as to what we finally did. And of course, he had to spend the money and account for the money. Now, that's putting a lot more work on you. Just like I said, the easiest thing is to hire a regular county, an attorney to work for you, but I don't, you don't, you can't afford that, you don't wanna do that. But I think having Dane do something like that in the county attorney's office, giving you somebody who knows that their primary responsibility is to the council. And, and they may tell you, and you may not agree with what they tell you, but you, you still have that separate and apart. And if it's somebody who works with a, with a county executive, if there's a conflict in there and it issues you're going, then you're gonna have to decide how to build what I call the Chinese wall. But I think that's important. I think the other thing in, in doing the balance back and forth is appointment of positions and, and executive orders. What happened, now, see, one of the big fights the legislature had was when COVID-19 came into effect. Governor Herbert called a thirty-day emergency, and then he automatically renewed it and kept renewing it. And the legislature's saying, wait a minute, wait a minute, we don't know, you ought to be locking everything down and doing all of this, because we were being beaten up by the people. See, you have the advantage that you represent your district. I would suspect that if most people in your district have a problem, they come to you, Mark. They come to you, Dave. They don't go to the county, the county executive. And so you're kinda the outside coming in. The executive is kinda the inside going out, trying to balance the whole thing that's going on. So I think when you look at those, you, you need to make clearly sure what appointment process you have, how you handle executive orders that are given. Because obviously, you, he can't come to you, the executive can't come to you every time he needs to make a decision that's part of his parcel. But I think if you get some rules, so you know where you're going with it, and follow. I look at the legislature, legislature and the council as being really the leaders of the county. You, you are elected to do this, you set the budget, you, you do the appointments of people when there's replacements to be done. And I think you just need to, need to make sure you have the staff and the support that you can do that. And we're lucky in Cache Valley, because by and large, we're all the same party. And even when we had different political people in here, they were at the same party. I thought the county's always been pretty united, even with different political parties. But the time may come, I hope not, as I've done, seen in the legislature, you can get real fights going on between the attorney general and the governor, or the attorney general and the legislature, or the legislature and the governor. You can see some real fights. And I think you need to understand as you go into it where your roles are. Now, I've talked all I, all I can talk. As Nolan Gunnel knows, and I say, under five minutes, I do under five minutes.
What questions would you have?
I have a question for you, Senator. Can you tell us about communications between the legislative and executive branch that you observed with different governors, different legislators, different legislative leaders?
Let me tell you, the governor, and, and again, it changes with governor, but the general rule was, the governor met with the Speaker of the House and the President of Senate on a weekly basis. They'd either have a breakfast or an evening meeting, and they would meet and talk about the issues they saw. The governor then would meet with the legislative leaders of the Democrats one time, Republicans another time, not together, but they'd meet separately. And they'd just talk about what they saw and their issues going back and forth that they were doing. Most governors had an open door to the legislature. I've always, and people ask me, and I tell you, the best governor in my mind was, was Norm Bangater. He understood the legislative process, and he really followed it very closely. It wasn't uncommon to be on a debate or something on the floor, and my phone would ring, I'd pick it up, and it'd be Governor Bangater, he's just listened to the floor debate. And he said, great job, Senator, you got what I wanted to get done, in that, he followed it very closely. And I think he understood the rules. Some, some people, and I go back now to make a horrible example of Richard Nixon. I think Nixon so wanted to be President of the United States, that when he finally got it, he thought he was above the law. And I've seen some governors who, once they get in that role, think that they alone run the state, and they don't. And that's where you, you have to balance them back and forth. Generally speaking, most governors have an open-door pro, policy that you can go down and talk to them anytime you want. Some are more willing to take advice than others, but, and I won't get into names. So then I say, I, I really appreciated Norm Bangater.
Thank you, Senator.
I wanna hear a comment from our, because his name was Jake, now is Dane. Dane, let's hear a comment from your role.
Jake gets all the blame, and Dane gets all the glory.
Well, Jake only wants, he doesn't work here anymore, so. He'll be happy to hear that he gets the blame when he's not even a employee. So I actually ran into Senator in the hallway, just walking in the other day, and he talked to me about this. So I came prepared to talk through some of this. Actually, the state legisl, and I was familiar with some case law on this exact issue of county councils or county executives having their own legal counsel. And so I was able to come prepared today. So under the county's code, Utah Code related to counties, seventeen fifteen twenty-seven, either the executive or the county council can retain, can appoint their own attorney to advise and represent them, but this legal counsel may not perform any functions of a county attorney or district attorney under this title, except for provided by this section. This section says, an attorney, the, the powers that are granted may represent the county legislative body or the county executive in cases and controversies before courts and administrative agencies or tribunals when conflict exists that precludes the county or district attorney from representing the county legislative body. So there's two things there. If it's a, if it's a function that's not laid out under the Utah Code that the county attorney or district attorney performs, so say, in the case of the, the audit being performed by the, the county council, you've retained legal counsel to assist with legal issues that arise with that audit. There's nowhere in the, under eighteen A in the state code that grants the county attorney's office authority to give advice to the county council in relation to an audit. But if you go to the, the functions of the county attorney, county attorney is civil counsel under eighteen A five oh one, shall appear and prosecute and defend each civil action in which the county as a party prosecute either directly or through private contract for debt collection, each action for recovery of debts, fines or penalties, or forfeitures accruing to the county. Prosecute each appeal regarding the civil council's duties in which the council's a party. Act as the civil legal advisor of the county and attend meetings and hearings of the county legislative bodies necessary. County attorney also shall prepare a legal opinion in writing to a county officer on matters related to duties of that officer's respective office. The county attorney shall review and revise to form and legality each county contract, ordinance, regulation, real estate document, conveyance, and legal document. And shall review each county ordinance, shall call to attention of the county legislative body any defect in operation of law, and shall suggest and edit presenting amendments to correct the defect. So we can have a differing opinion, I can say this is an issue legally, and I can advise you, but at the end of the day, it's the legislative body's choice. I can't by my position veto your, your legislation, just because I think it's, it's a violation of the law or defective in some way. And then, under eighteen A eight oh two, it, it makes clear that the county attorney represents the county. The county attorney does not represent a county commission, county agency, county board, county council, county officer, or county employee, and counsels the county regarding civil matters and receives direction from the county through county-elected officers in accordance with the officer's duties and powers in accordance with law. So as a body, the county council can give me direction, the county executive, the county sheriff, the county clerk can give me direction through their office, but I do not represent them as an individual. So when there would be a conflict that occurs, so say, the county council, and I'm gonna pick on Jess, because he's sitting right here, and he's leaving next week. So Jess is doing something that the county council, which is, oh, this is a new scenario. The county council doesn't think is in accordance to his powers. And so the county council decides to sue Jess in the district court, asking for declarative relief, saying he can't do that, and injunction to stop him from doing it. Well, at that point, that's the county council versus the county clerk. There's a conflict, obviously, because I rep, I would represent the county. I can't represent Jess, because then I'm, I'm, there's a conflict between me and the county. I can't represent the council, because I'm supposed to advise his department. So at that point, there would be, need to be counsel retained for that specific purpose. You could, as, as the, the Senator suggests, if you wanted to have counsel to advise you as to budgeting, as to drafting ordinances and things. But at the end of the day, the county attorney's office is going to have to review those, because I think this is, this goes to some of those counties that might have a split in political parties. So they pass this, this code section that says you can only hire an attorney for this very, very limited purpose, to prevent the county attorney from kinda just being bypassed and not letting the people who's elected that representative have a say in what the council's doing. So I, it's a little bit different, I think, from, because the legislature's made it different than what the attorney generals set up as, and I think that's just the, maybe the state government keeping a thumb a little bit on the county government. But we are in a position, which this is relatively new for the county, just within the last year or so, instead of just having one civil attorney assigned to our civil division, starting next month, we'll actually have three, so it'll be easier to give an assignment. This, you're assigned to this department, and this is already happening, we have assignments broken out, but we can make a specific assignment for the council and for the executive, being two different people. So when there is maybe a competing interest there that doesn't arise to a conflict, in an actual case of controversy, there's not a, there's not some of the friction that might come when you're going to the same person and trying to argue your side. You can both bring your own legal opinion. And I think that will, I guess, do what the, what the Senator's suggesting here without running afoul of the Utah statute on, on that. But also not coming to the point where the county attorney's office is representing the council as a entity. We're just providing that legal advice, separate from the legal advice we're providing to the county executive, if that makes sense.
Dane, you mentioned that, it sounded like all those examples you gave were like court-level interactions, the tribunals, things like that. Is, have we ever gotten anywhere close to something like that here?
I, I've never heard of, I mean, I guess, I don't know how close the councils come to suing any of our other elected officials. I, I haven't been involved in something that's gotten to that point. It's happened in other counties.
So if it's just like a policy thing, like, should we adopt this or, or that? Do you think that warrants having that Great Wall of China between people?
Well, and that's where we get into, you have the China, like a Chinese wall. I hope that's not an offensive term in this one history, but.
Been used for a thousand years.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was thinking. So Chinese wall between people when there's a conflict, but where we're, we represent the county. I don't, if, I think if it's coming to the point that there's a conflict, there has to be a case or controversy in question. Otherwise, we can't, we're probably violating state law if we're to the point where representing you as a client and also you as a client, because we don't represent by state code, we do not represent a county commission, county agency, county board, county council, county officer, or county employee, we represent the county. So what we have, our, it says, represent the county as an organization, as a client, in accordance with the rules Professor of Conduct one point one three. So if we're, we're splitting our actual representation and not just advising you on if you're drafting an ordinance or a policy, and the council's probably advising, drafting one. We can advise as to form and function, but as to whether it's a good policy, I think that's where we have to take a step back. And I can give you my opinion as to what's in the best interests of the county as a whole, but it's really a policy decision for the council and the executive to fight about. And so the county attorney, my, my opinion should, if, if there's a problem, if we pass this policy, I think it opens the county up to legal liability, or I think this would hurt the county overall, it could cost us money. I think I have a duty to step up, but if it's just a straight policy decision that's not going to harm the county as a client, that's where the attorney's office can help as to form and as to legality, but should just take a step back and allow the policy decision-makers to make the, those decisions.
I'm not here to answer your questions, just to raise questions, that's my childhood attorney. But let me give you two examples. Number one, one of the real issues we have in the state is that each agency is not always happy with the attorney, the attorney general gives them. And so, for example, the Department of Agriculture may, if they're not happy with that attorney, they may hire an attorney, but they call him a clerk or her clerk. They staff and they do the legal work, because the attorney general will say, I have to appear for a court, I have to do legal work, but the attorney general can't cover everybody, it's just not enough bodies. So what, how do you handle that conflict? And the other, say I sue David Zuck, and I say that he exceeded his authority in what he did in granting the money or doing certain payment. And David says back to me, well, I can check, check with, with David Erickson, and he said it was okay. And I checked with Dane, and he told me it was okay. So my defense is, I've got the council approval, at least the chairman, and I've got the attorneys. How, how do you defend all of that when the individual files that lawsuit? That's the kinda nightmare, is it? Or, and like I say, the other thing is when you get somebody who's totally off of the other in one elected officials, like the county sheriff, if, for example, he decided he wanted to implement a whole different changes in his office, and. to implement a whole different changes in his office, and you said, hey, you can't do that, and he says, sure, I can, I'm doing it. How do you really handle those? So I think you need to have something in your program, how you would handle a situation like that. Hopefully, it never comes.
So I have a question for Dane, with everything that you said, just to make sure that I'm clear. Different than hiring an attorney that represents the council, there could be someone from your office that is kind of assigned, so that if someone here on the council, if we have an opinion or a differing opinion about the interpretation of code or policy, that someone could advise us and give us something to go on? Because I think that was some of the conflict from last year that I observed, was just a differing opinion in that policy or what the interpretation of that is. And is that something that we could set up, just that basic functionality as we move forward?
Yeah, and the council actually did that last year on an issue. I hope in the future we can, it doesn't get to the point that we're having, the council's having to go out and retain another law firm.
Just within your office?
Within our office, I think that's, that's my intent, is to have someone specifically, whether it's me, if the council would like that, or one of the other civil attorneys, be the council's assigned representative, and then have, and we only have, there's only three of us, so not every county-elected official can have their own attorney, there's going to be some double up, but where each one can go to a different attorney as they're working through some of these things. So if there is a conflicting interest or a conflicting interpretation, we can come with two different interpretations, and there's not going to be pressure from, I don't want to pressure Taylor to adopt mine if he's representing the executive. So we can definitely set up policies within our office, and I'm afraid that's something we're working on.
Just remember, if there are two attorneys, there'll be five opinions.
How about, should the legislative body ever present their legal opinion without it going through an attorney?
I think you're safer to have an attorney.
Okay.
Usually the attorney.
Should the executive ever present a legal opinion without going through the attorney?
I wouldn't.
Okay. Because that's, that can cause a lot of headache, right? And, okay, that's.
You may think you're as smart as the founding fathers when they created the U.S. Constitution.
Exactly.
They were.
I understand.
Let me just end with one last remark. When Sandy Goodlander came to me and said she thought of running for the county council, I thought about it last time, a meeting I was here, how long it went. I told her not to worry, it was only 30 minutes every twice a month, and so she'd have plenty of time to do everything else she wanted to do.
He lied to me. He lied through his teeth.
I lied.
No.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Anyone else out there want some input? Oh, Paul does. Go ahead, Paul, and you go ahead and finish your comment.
I just wanted to add, so one of the duties that the county attorney's office shall do is, shall prepare a legal opinion in writing to each county officer on matters related to the duties of the officer's office. So if there is a, and this is for the council and for any elected official, when you do come with a, sometimes it's, this legal opinion is really quick, can you look this up in code? If there is a legal opinion where there's reasonable minds could differ, and we need to actually dig in, request that, and it's, my office shall provide that. I think maybe sometimes in the past where we've gotten into some trouble is, we've kind of shot from the hip and told people things, but there's not that documentation where we've actually gone and done the legal analysis. There's accountability to our office when we do that because there's a paper trail, it's like, this was our opinion after we did the work, and so that helps, you make an informed decision, it makes the other elected officials, there's actually something tangible there rather than just a conversation to go and analyze and decide, is this the, is the council want to take this as the opinion, or do we want to make a decision contrary to this opinion, or do we want to look into talking to someone else about this?
Go ahead, Paul.
I'm going to come back to that last comment at the end, Dane, thanks so much. And thank you for your service, I know what it means to take time out of your day, counsel. Senator Hilliard, thank you so much, Dane, appreciate, appreciate y'all, and thank you for this time. Senator Hilliard's comments about the difference between state and county, I think those are very important for you to keep in mind as a county council. And the difference between Cache County and the rest of the state, because most of the state, most of the counties are commissioner forms of government rather than council and executive forms of government, and even council and executive forms of government can have differentiation. So be sure to keep that in mind. And Senator Hilliard's comments about going back to the foundational documents and where the power lies within Cache County is very important. I don't think you need to look to the rest of the state, you need to look to what Cache County says rather than what the rest of the state says. And the power definitely lies within the council. I think Dane's comments about who the county attorney represents is very important. Be sure to understand, the attorney represents the county as an entity, it is Cache County Incorporated. The attorney does not represent the Cache County Council, the attorney does not represent the Cache County Executive, or the auditor, or the sheriff. It represents Cache, he represents Cache County, and his office represents Cache County. So you need to be sure you understand that very clearly. Senator Hilliard's comments about the budget as who is in charge, that is the council, that is the council. The council is in charge of the budget, just like the governor can make recommendations to the legislature, the executive can make recommendations to the council, but he cannot do anything, and the governor cannot do anything without.
Except one thing, he can veto, but you know varieties of vetoes, specific line items.
Bingo, bingo. And line items is another thing to be very cognizant of. I think as the council, you need to look at line items. Each one line items is very, very detailed. It's not the overall budget, you can veto line items. So be aware of that. I think we're in complete agreement. I appreciated Senator Hilliard's comments about the legislature and the council being the leaders of an organization. As a council, you are the leaders of this county, and the citizens look to you for that. I also liked the comments about Richard Nixon thinking that once he got elected, he was in charge. He was not. Government by the people is bigger than one person, and it needs to be done by common consent, by the will of the people. One thing I've found in my private life is that you can have great contracts, but if you don't have people that are good actors, good faith actors, doesn't matter how good your contract is, it's never going to matter. It will be litigated. And you can have the worst contract in the world, but if you've got good faith actors, things will get done. So I think people need to act in good faith. And to Dane's point, reasonable men can differ, and I think if you go back, and especially once this audit is done, and you look at the legal representation that the council engaged with last year, because as Dane said, he is not the attorney for the county council. Reasonable people can differ, and I appreciate Dane and the time that I had to work with him. There are reasonable differences. And when you get to those and you look at them, you don't need to always go to litigation, but you need to be able to come to some type of an agreement, and you need to have people that can negotiate. And if people aren't going to negotiate, the last thing you want to do is acquiesce and just go along to get along. There are things that are important for this county, for the citizens, and you need to hold to those. And I think as you see the legal opinion that we, that the council engaged with last year to represent themselves, and actually what Dane's office would do, those two things will be in alignment, because it was what do most people want to do. So I think all those points, I just wanted to step up and iterate those at this point as just a private citizen of Cache County, and appreciate your representation of us, and Sandy especially, for your representation of our area, I appreciate it. Believe me, I appreciate you running for office. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Other comments? Nolan? He's reverent.
Wake up.
Yeah, wake up, Nolan.
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else comments anywhere? Go ahead.
I did have one question on behalf of my office. GLAD 2022 is over, right? We can all probably agree that we're GLAD, we're moving together as a collaborative body, and we're having these discussions. If the council has the benefit of giving themselves a budget, if, let's just say, an auditor or the sheriff, let's use the sheriff, if the sheriff runs into a snag versus the council or the executive, where does the budget come from in the case of a conflict?
That's going to be.
Counsel.
Counsel.
Because essentially, the council could veto the power to have counsel, so it could turn out that the council said, well, you will have to sue us for that because we don't want you to do that. This was one of my concerns last year, I'll be honest, is that the council could say, well, we don't want you to do this, and then there would be a conflict between the branches, but we don't have a purse string, but we don't have a line item for that, and then you just win by default. So that's one of my, that was one of the concerns that I had from this perspective, just as.
I guess my response to that is that you have a public meeting, open meeting, you put the item on the agenda, and you debate it and vote.
In, in public.
Yeah, in public.
Yes, we need to do the public's business in public. I think that's critical.
If they don't like how you voted, the public supports the sheriff and not you, you have to make a tough decision, because I'm sure every one of these agencies you have, you'd give more money to if you had it, because every agency can come and show you how they'd spend money and how they need money, but you have a limited budget, you have to make that decision. As long as it's policy, courts are pretty generous in letting you make policy. If it's conniving to do something, then you may have some amount of trouble, but how you prove it, that's, because a lawyer is difficult.
The council has an attorney working on something currently?
Does the council?
Yeah.
Nothing specific. Specific for, we have, just that forensic audit, but we don't have any?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about it at all. Should we have heard something about that?
No.
Should we be aware as council members?
Anything? I don't know of anything. No, I don't.
Okay.
You want something?
I'm just curious what the scope is and what the purpose is.
Yeah, we got the FBI looking in on Mark over here.
That'd be fun, I think, but I'm just unaware of what we're going on there.
Yeah, to my surprise, I've been here six months and never been told the scope of what that is.
Heard a thing about it.
Five months.
Over which?
I guess the forensic audit, or whatever Paul just referenced, there's a report coming.
And there is. Yeah, that's, there, we hear three council members that have been meeting with them. So, and we can give updates on that, but not, that stuff cannot be out in public. Yeah, so until they release that.
My favorite is the person who reads on the internet a legal opinion, and that's the legal opinion they want to follow. Not always what you do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, I think there's, is there Biddleston?